All right, I hope you have been initiating all the legwork that's required. Reach to the booth and grasp as much as you can, but I'm sure you would be able to sort of not sneak out right when the sessions are on, but in between whenever we are switching, do spend some time there. Right now, we'll just quickly focus and it's so good to be on time. That is what we are practicing as well. A special session that will talk about the blockchain development story of Singapore as I had briefed all of you as well. So we'll be joined by our speakers who will be in conversation with each other. So this would be between Shadap Tayabi, the president of Singapore FinTech Association, along with Matthew Lovett, the executive committee member, Singapore FinTech Association. So some global perspectives and the chat, please stay tuned as they appear on the screens right away.
Hi, everyone. This is Matthew Lovett from the Singapore FinTech Association. I sit on the executive committee and help with the strategic direction of the association. With me, I have President Shadap Tayabi. Shadap, would you like to say quick on?
Thanks, Matt. Hi, everyone. My name is Shadap Tayabi and the president of the Singapore FinTech Association. And I also run FinTech and Innovation for short as here in Singapore.
Thanks, Shadap. So in addition to my day-to-day role with SFA, I'm a director with Deloitte. I focus on the delivery of tax advice to stakeholders in the fintech space with a particular focus on crypto and blockchain. And that's what we're going to speak to you predominantly about today. How blockchain has been picked up in Singapore and the role of the Singapore FinTech Association of more generally and our activities in the blockchain space. So just to introduce, Shadap, we've been discussing this before today, just in preparation for the session. I think in terms of with the blockchain journey in Singapore, we'd really commented that the journey has been quite interesting. From a technical and a development perspective, one of the things that we had observed really was that a lot of the developments in financial services were being led by fintech. That was partly how I first became involved in the space. And what we were seeing, at least in terms of my own practice, was that a lot of the developments were being led from the crypto perspective. And I think looking back, if we look at the development of blockchain in particular, crypto has been under development for a long period of time. Some people commented that crypto was really a solution looking for a problem. And in around 2016, 2017 in Singapore, we really started to see a lot of crypto projects really spring up. And I think on the back of that and the crypto cold winter from mid-2017 onward, we started to see the market take a slightly different approach. The number of projects coming through was a bit more limited, but what we did see was that the projects that were coming through were perhaps more enterprise blockchain related, given that the activities more crypto-focused are perhaps called a little. The markets are called a little, but the developments that have been seen from the crypto side really sort of emphasized the importance of blockchain and its potential applications. So I think one of the real inflection points in Singapore around the developments of blockchain more generally was that that first development of crypto to begin with and then leveraging the local ecosystem in order to be able to look at the applications of blockchain more generally and then pivot into other types of applications that may be then deployed across fintech and financial services. So in terms of the development of the ecosystem, what's your perspective on how things have developed over the past few years? And how active our local stakeholders have been?
Thanks, Matt. I think that was a very good precursor to the opening of this. And I welcome all viewers here who are here to understand more about the development or, you know, so-called progress of the Singapore fintech ecosystem, including specifically on blockchain technologies as well. You're absolutely right. I mean, we all know that blockchain is underlying technology behind the cryptocurrency. It's how it all started, but we've also seen how blockchain has been particularly useful in many various industries as well, many various applications use cases as well. In Singapore particularly, I'll just talk about the growth of the cryptocurrency or crypto tokens, I would say ecosystem altogether. Back in 2014 itself, one of the associations or the industry bodies access, which you're quite familiar with Matt as well, they came into existence and they went ahead and launched an industry initiative to create this code of conduct for the crypto companies. And that was done in collaboration with our regulator, with other industry bodies as well. Now, we all know how the application has evolved beyond just cryptocurrency, the application of blockchain. There are quite a few companies that have come up, which are focusing on multiple areas and segments, such as, you know, the digital payment tokens, you know, it's just one application, but into the digital asset space as well, into investments. And it's not just these companies that are focused on individual investors, the accredited investors, but also on enterprises as well, a B2B solution per se. If you look at the fintech ecosystem in Singapore, it has evolved quite, quite, I would say, maturely as well in the past few years. And as of yesterday, I was just looking at the our own directory in terms of the, you know, the number of companies that are there. There are about 1,700 companies that are listed on our directory. Our membership base is about 900 members for SFA, the Singapore FinTech Association. Out of those 1,700 listed on that directory, there are about 240 plus who tag themselves as blockchain and PLT. And about 120 plus of them tag themselves as cryptocurrency companies. So you can see that there is a good number of companies that are actually focusing on blockchain cryptocurrency. And it is, the list is expanding as we speak.
Interesting. Thanks for sharing. So I guess with that, then, I guess the key point is that the blockchain ecosystem within Singapore is quite vibrant. It's quite broad. And I guess the point to just draw out here is that blockchain and cryptocurrency developed in tandem, but I think given that the impetus was around cryptocurrency and a lot being a lot of attention there to begin with, that is what has led to a lot of the developments. And since sort of the crypto cold winter toward the the middle of 2017, we've started to see that shift more towards enterprise blockchain. So whilst cryptocurrency really is just one application of blockchain, what we do see is that it has contributed to the state of the development quite significantly. So I guess in terms of the ecosystem generally, what we found in Singapore is that Singapore has had quite a vibrant fintech community for quite some time. That has led to a large number of different stakeholders across the entire spectrum of the sector, locating themselves here and that creating a synergistic effect whereby everybody's working collaboratively. That has attracted talent resource. We've even seen financial services using Singapore as a base to develop fintech solutions to to basically incubate their own fintech solutions as well. And what we've seen is in terms of spinoffs in blockchain development have been quite broad. So in addition to still having a core cryptocurrency number of stakeholders, we do have, as you mentioned, Shadap, a number of blockchain-specific development outfits. And there are also, quite interestingly, a number of tokenization platforms that have launched recently over the past few years. And those in particular are things that I find particularly interesting from a practice perspective. Is that something that you can maybe talk about a little more?
Yeah, sure. So if you look at the application of blockchain technology into finance, I think one of the key, I would say, application areas is in investments. We have seen quite a few of these players sort of establishing their businesses in Singapore and their regulators. Some examples could be these companies who have a market operator license or they are additional assets exchange. So they, what they do is, you know, they tokenize these private assets. These private assets could be your VCs, your hedge funds, your private equity. And they put these tokens out and issue tokens around them and for trading onto their exchange. And then you have accredited investors and other types of investors who can have access to this liquidity pool. That is one aspect of it. And then there are certain platforms which have come, which have come up, which are purely white labeled B2B platforms, which can enable some of these traditional asset managers or providers to be able to tokenize their traditional securities into, you know, STOs, quite a commonly known name now, the security token offerings. So in addition to just listing or creating these securities, there's an aspect of custody as well. So there are quite a few players who have come in, which are purely focused on providing the custody solutions. So one of the things that our regulator has done pretty well is to be able to keep pace with the innovation that is coming into the industry and making sure that they are always listening and they are always at the same time adapting quickly the regulations. So for example, Securities Futures Act, SFA, the other SFA has been quite clearly expanded to include tokenized offerings as well. Just because of the nature of those products, the initial products is still exactly the same as the financial product that it is securitizing. The bonds, stocks, funds, just because it's available as additional assets or a tokenized offering over blockchain doesn't necessarily change the, and you know this better than we, you know, when you come in from that consultancy consulting background and you work with your clients accordingly on that. So, so all that has actually created a full ecosystem of these blockchain-based companies who run their products, who run their business on blockchain technologies. And I think it's always for us to see how it evolves.
Great. Thanks for the insight. So I think you touched on an interesting point there. I guess that's something that I maybe just like to tease out a little. The Monetary Authority of Singapore is both our central bank and financial services promotional agency. The different parts of the organization focus on different aspects. I think from what I see in terms of my day-to-day practice is that the role of the MAS from both of those angles has been extremely important. What I see is that the MAS has struck a very good balance between its supervisory responsibilities and facilitating innovation, development, engaging fintechs proactively through a sandbox has been particularly helpful, because I think one of the issues around regulation, if we look at how regulation has worked historically, is that it tends to be quite paternal and very reactive. And when we're talking about fintech, we're talking about a case of where new technologies are driving disruption. So trying to put that alongside a paternalistic approach to regulation doesn't work very well. So you almost need a very proactive, engaged approach to regulation. I think through the sandbox in particular and through its its community engagement activities, the MAS is a supporter of SFA, as we know from working with and through and for SFA. And working in a very collaborative way like that, from my perspective, has been very important, because not only, as you say, have we seen the number of stakeholders within the ecosystem increase and collaborate amongst themselves, but also working with the MAS in that very proactive engage way has been very important to making sure that the ecosystem grows together. And that is itself creating synergy. So I think one of the things I do see through practice is the importance of that type of approach by the MAS and how that is in turn feeding into the overall dynamic and helping lead to further development.
Matt, if I may add to that, those are very, very important. That's a very important point that you brought up. I think I need to highlight here that we are very blessed to have a collaborative regulator, yet at the same time, you know, I would also say that there's an important element, a national industry association, like SFA plays into this whole aspect. One of the key focus areas for us has been, as we call it, one of the six pillars to support our vision, to make Singapore the global fintech hub. One of the key pillars, and I would say the most important pillar, is the advocacy element of it, being the voice of Singapore fintech. So what we have created at our end, and Matthew has been, you know, a co-rider on this journey for all of us, is that ability to be as vocal and clear about what we want from the other stakeholders as well, including regulators. It's not just regulators, it's academia, because the fintech talent pool is as important to run the show as, you know, the entrepreneurs who are driving the business. So that important element has been kept into all our work. And that includes, you know, launching these subcommittees. We already had subcommittees from the beginning, but what we have done in the past one year is to reinforce and restructure the whole organization of these subcommittees. And Matthew, you've been driving that. Thank you for that. That's a very important element of us as SFA, being the National Industry Association, because we only exist because of our members who are there to gain benefit out of, you know, collaboration about innovation, but also to be able to highlight the challenges that they may have, they are facing to the policymakers, to the government organizations as well. So that's something which we have been focused on, specifically on blockchain. We are, you know, you've been involved in the process of launching the Web 3.0 subcommittee as well, which will be focused and which will have membership coming in from a multitude of, you know, fintech SFA members, particularly in the blockchain space. We have digital asset exchanges, we have digital custody players, some of the digital payment token providers coming in. They will all form that, I would say, the nexus of companies, all for the right reason, to ensure that the the segment continues to grow, yet at the same time, we are able to highlight all the challenges directly to the policymakers as and when needed, so that, you know, we can continue on this journey of, you know, being adaptive rather than just being, you know, I would say reactive, as you rightly pointed out earlier. I would also want to sort of understand from you, being an industry leader who has actually seen this journey of Singapore into blockchain for those many years, are there any major challenges that you see you've come across? Which you want to highlight for the benefit of our viewers?
One particularly interesting one is, it touches on what we were discussing before, and regulation in the past having been reactive. I'm legally trained. I look at things from a practice perspective, but also with a legal mind. And one of the difficulties that I do see on a day-to-day basis is that law, regulation, very often was never designed to deal with some of the developments that we're now seeing. So from a professional services perspective, one of the things that I really do grapple with on a daily basis is how we adapt to the differences in business models that we're seeing arising as a result of blockchain. Smart contracts, increases in the level of automation and the impacts those are having on not only how businesses operate and their business models, but also supply chains. So one of the things that I do see a particular challenge in connection with is how do we take existing laws, regulations and translate those to the blockchain-type model whereby there isn't always a direct translation and it's not always particularly easy to apply the rules and regulations that we have to that type of context. I think that's where things like the proactive approach of the MAS is important. The MAS obviously considers things from a regulatory angle. You mentioned the Securities and Futures Act before, that the MAS has been very clear around the way the Securities and Futures Act would apply to tokenize securities. In addition to the Securities and Futures Act, we have the Payment Services Act and the MAS again has been quite clear around how the Payment Services Act is expected to apply to payment tokens or what the community would typically consider to be cryptocurrencies. If I look at my day-to-day role as a tax professional, I also see a good level of guidance coming out of other Singapore agencies like the inland revenue authority, which it's still going through a process of being educated. But at the same time, it is putting out a good level of guidance and engaging with the community when it feels as though there is sufficient clarity to be engaging people around that. So I think if we compare that and the approach that we're seeing locally to the approach of some other jurisdictions, I think it's fair to say that the level of clarity is coming through. There is a good level of clarity. It doesn't, it's not panacea. It doesn't solve all the problems, but I think that is fundamentally a function of just the pace of development of the technology. And I think being part of a community here in Singapore and what we see through the SFA is that the developments are really being driven by the community, the willingness of the authorities to engage and help address some of these issues proactively is frankly, I think, as good as we can get, particularly given that there are always going to be challenges like this. If we have all stakeholders on board that are working in collaboration, working through these issues together, it's to everybody's benefit.
I agree, Matt. And if I may add just one point to that as well, right? You talked about how the collaboration with the regulators and policies is important. And, you know, working with them closely has been one of the key, I would say, drivers. But I will still go back and say our entrepreneurs, our founders have done an amazing job. And I'll tell you why I'm saying that. Missing job in being very clear about adapting and pivoting their business models as and when they see how it's evolving. So I've seen companies like Fennel Group, which is a very active member of SFA, forming this member exchange called HX, ADX, one of the other SFA companies, also evolving their business models. Players like Bondi Valley coming up with rationalized bonds to be traded on additional assets exchange and then pivoting it to looking at other aspects as well. So overall, we can see that our community has not sit forward, you know, backward and, you know, in terms of, you know, approaching the problems and challenges as they come. So we can see that all of them have actually evolved and pivoted their business models very quickly with the changing demographics. And then I'll highlight also that assets like, additional assets like NFTs were not that popular earlier, right? But in the past couple of years, we have seen their popularity increase a lot. And you can see that they are being offered as an investment possibility as well on some of these platforms, which also says a lot about our founders and our community's ability to, you know, quickly, quickly challenge the status quo and then move on, you know, with new advanced technologies as well. I think that's what our viewers are quite keen to know and quite keen to learn about as well, because I think our viewers, quite a few of them are based in Asia and especially India, and they're looking at, you know, learning from the Singapore story as much as possible. And I think this conversation will probably give them a bit more clarity. Before we end off, Matt, let me ask a question. Where do you see the biggest, I would say, opportunities in the next couple of years or so? Where do you see this whole interaction evolving? If you could give some nuggets to us and how, you know, the Singapore Inc. or the Singapore ecosystem is working on it?
Sure. So I think to take the last part first, so Singapore Inc. and the ecosystem, as I mentioned, it is very collaborative, all of the different stakeholders from, from our members right through to the regulators, to the governmental agencies, they're working on this as a group. It is very collaborative. To other jurisdictions, I would say that that approach you practice has been very impactful. The ecosystem here is extremely buoyant. The amount of development that is being seen is pretty astounding, especially when we're talking about a relatively short period of time. So things maybe have been terminating for a while, but if we look over the past two, three, four years, the pace of development really has accelerated. If we look at the direction of travel, so where we're going, I think it's fair to say that over the medium term, so maybe over the next two, three, four years, we'll perhaps start to see blockchain technologies being adopted by more and more incumbent players. So I focus from a practice perspective on the financial services sector. That was how I became involved in fintech. I think if we look at financial services, we look at the financial institutions, we look at fund managers, one of the real issues in the past has been an issue around investment in legacy systems, their business models being particularly focused on those deployments. And before they've been ready to invest in blockchain and new solutions, the potential return has had to be quite high. I think over time, as we've started to see greater competitive pressure come out of the fintech community, I think it's meant that there's been downward pressure on the need for those incremental returns, which has then driven competition between fintech financial services. My own view is that over the next few years, we'll start to see that pressure increase. We'll start to see incumbent players, the banks, the investment managers, start to move from proof of concept and design into full implementation models. It may take some time, given the legacy systems type issues that I mentioned. And obviously, operational resilience is always important for the financial sector. So I think it's going to take some time to get the balance right. I think there might be a point in which we see technical solutions running tandem to make sure that that operational resilient issue is is properly considered and accounted for. But I think we will start to see a maturation of blockchain, enterprise blockchain and start to see some more active deployments across what we might consider some more traditional players.
I can't disagree with you on that. I think it's very clear that fintechs are coming in as an enabler rather than
And a catalyst.
And a catalyst. Yeah, absolutely catalyst. And then just to specifically focus on one of the areas where everybody is talking about, of course. And that's one of the most important topics is sustainability. And we are seeing quite a big rise in the number of companies and fintechs specifically targeting some of these sustainability solutions using blockchain. There is, there is one of our own members hashtags, stacks, as we know them commonly. They have launched a project in collaboration with MAS on that as well, Green Print Project. I think that's quite public right now. These specific application use case areas, which are more, I would say, forward-looking and solving problems for the longer term, will probably be, I think, one of the lighthouse, you know, areas of blockchain application development in Singapore for sure.
Absolutely. And maybe just to round up, I think a point there which is worth drawing out is that I think that will become a point over the medium term, where people stop talking about blockchain in blockchain terms and it becomes a tool within a wider toolkit, the sustainability-type solutions that you mentioned, blockchain combined with Web 3, some other digital solutions. I think that's the road we're on. We're very much focused on blockchain today because it's new. Everybody sort of knows the name. They don't necessarily understand how it works, but I think as time passes, I think we'll start to see less about blockchain in and of itself, but more as enabler for automatic outcomes along the lines of you just suggested.
I think that has been quite a worthwhile discussion, Matt. I hope our viewers got some clear views on where the application of blockchain has been in Singapore and we were able to share some nuggets from our growth story as well.
Absolutely. And maybe just to round up, I guess apologies to the audience that we can't be with you directly today and we're not in a position to be able to take Q and A. But thank you to the Economic Times for inviting us and we hope that you found the discussion helpful. Thanks, Shadap.
Thank you, Matt. And thanks, everyone, for watching.
Thank you.
Well, to our discussions right now, it's not just about, of course, hoping. I'm confident that our spectators I'm confident that our spectators, our viewers had some very genuine takeaways. So takeaways to sort of grasp from the discussion that just happened. And as you mentioned, the most important pillar is advocacy. Shadab and Matthew, good to know about your side of the development story as well. And I must compliment you also, both of you, for a very well-presented chat with the good aesthetics intact as well. Thank you so much. And that looks immaculate. Thank you. All right. Coming up, ladies and gentlemen, is a flash presentation that will actually contain two sessions. Now, what would they entail? I will tell you as soon as you're right back with us for this penultimate interesting session. See you just in a bit. You can hang out around the booths, engage in networking. Of course, our discussions just talked about the question bit, but I'm sure at least you can chat amongst yourselves, colleagues and the speakers likewise. I will just be right back.